We were going to get the, the meeting started with Vice President Barr will stand in for, for Councilmember Donavick and Vice President Barr will lead us in a, lead us in a prayer.
Lord, this will be short and this will be brief. Please grant us grace. Please grant us forgiveness. Please grant us wisdom. Amen.
Thank you, Vice President Barr. Good evening and welcome to the July 20th, 2020 study session of Livonia City Council. This meeting sets the agenda for the 1,902nd regular meeting, a voting meeting that will take place on Wednesday, August 5th, 2020. We do not have Councilmember Donavick with us this evening. He's away on, he's serving our country on active military duty. He may be calling in. We have an ordinance that was recently put into place that allows any council member who's serving on active military duty to participate in a meeting via something like Zoom or the telephone. So he'll join us if he can. And Councilmember Toy is not with us this evening. The only announcement I have is that we have some new data on items eight and nine and I will, I will reference that data specifically when we get to those items. And I'll just, I'll just review the, the city hall and meeting rules. And these are consistent with the COVID-19 protocols and rules in city hall. And city hall was just reopened today. Masks are required to be worn in all city buildings by those who are not medically advised against wearing a mask. And they, they have to be worn when not addressing the council. And we request that non-family groups seat themselves socially distant by having at least three, three chairs is about six feet between them. Anyone who's going to address the council may certainly remove his or her mask when they are going to address us. And we're going to ask audience members to use the podium to my left, but we can, petitioner, since I think most of you are seated over there, can be, are free to use this podium as well as any of our other city officials who are here tonight. There's hand sanitizer on the podiums and I think that's it. Did I miss anything on the COVID-19 rules? And as I did in the last meeting, I need to give a special thank you to our Director of Emergency Services, Brian Kahn, who has been absolutely instrumental in keeping our city moving forward in compliance with and abreast of all the constantly changing COVID-19 protocols and rules and executive orders. And he was extremely helpful to us in being able to have another in-person meeting tonight. Tonight's evening, as I think all of you know, is a study meeting. There are no votes taken. The council members will however, either offer, offer either one resolution or a combination of resolutions for each item. Resolutions offered may include approving, denying, or referring resolution to a committee or city department for its report and recommendation. A resolution of no further action may also be offered. There are some items that will simply be received and filed for the information of the city council. Please note that all of the items on tonight's agenda will move on to the regular meeting of Wednesday, August 5th, 2020, where they will officially be voted on. If you'd like to participate in any of the agenda items that are taken up this evening, please approach the podium over there. If you're sitting over there, you can use that podium. And you'll be, when the item is called in, as you know, you'll be recognized at the appropriate time. And as I think all of you know, the petitioner, whether that's the city or private entity, will generally make the initial presentation followed by remarks from those in the audience wishing to speak. So please come to the podium when your item is called. And when you reach the podium, we ask that you state your name and address for the record, if you're willing to do so, so that the remarks may be properly attributed to in the minutes. And it will let anyone watching at home and the council members know who is speaking to them. And with that, we will start with audience communication. If anyone in the audience would like to address the council on any item not on this evening's agenda, now is an opportunity to do so. Seeing none, we'll proceed with new business. Item number one, this is a request to amend Council Resolution 09-20. This comes to us from Paul F. Bond, Fason and Bond, LLP, to add language as required by the Michigan Department of Treasury to delineate the date the commercial rehabilitation district was established, the date of the public, the date the public hearing was held and the application was, and that the application was approved for less than 10 years. And this is relative to Council Resolutions 306, 30619 and 22619. That's it.
Hello, everybody. Happy to be here. Grateful to be here in person and healthy and glad to see everybody else is healthy as well. So we were last before you, I think in late December or early January to discuss this issue. And subsequent to that, the city clerk's office had submitted an application for a commercial rehabilitation certificate to the State Treasury Department. And then they responded back requesting the further information that I believe you have in your packet here.
All right. Vice President Barr.
Madam President, I, I don't need a mic, don't I? Offer approving resolution for consent if there's no objection. I do have one question for Mr. Grisco, for me.
Please, Mr. Barr.
Just curious, we don't need anything extensive, but update on the project. I mean, is the timing, when, when would we expect to see?
So obviously, the dynamic situation with the whole COVID-19 shutdown and everything like that happening, we're still exploring all possible avenues of getting the project to move forward.
Okay, thanks.
Madam President, if I may.
Please.
So I will just state for the record that I was against this. I voted against this the first time around. I will not ask for it to be put on the consent agenda because I do respect that this body made a decision. And this is only a clerical change here for purposes of allowing what council agreed to happen, happen. This was a professional courtesy. I'll just state for the record, I didn't agree with it when it came around the first time, but I'm not gonna keep it from being on the consent at this time. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? All right. So you are fine, Councilmember Jolly, with putting on the consent? Did you say?
I think Mr. Barr did, correct?
Yeah, but, but you, you weren't when you commented.
I'm not gonna take it off, no.
All right. We'll place it on the consent agenda, which means, Mr. Grisco, you do not have to come back and see us on the 5th of August, but you're always wel-
I think I might be here anyways, so.
You're always welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Item number two is a request to donate a parcel of land to the city of Livonia. This comes to us from Andrew Warner of the Northwest Financial Group. The land is located at 28330 Clarita, parcel ID 046-99-0054-002. Do we have a petitioner here?
Madam President, does the, if I may, through the, through the chair, does the law department know anything about this?
All I know is, all I would have read with respect to the, to the letter, I viewed with the, where the parcel is, but I have not heard anything from Mr. Warner or anybody on behalf of Northwest Financial.
Do we not, I think it's odd that we don't know how this came about, or we don't have further information on behalf of the administration in regards to this?
No, this is only, I have heard nothing from the petitioner.
So, Madam President, if we could put this on the regular agenda, but not consent, I would like that, just so we can have time to review and figure out what's going on with this?
Yeah, I think.
It may be a diamond mine. We don't, we don't know. Or there may be something else there.
Or an oil, or an oil well.
Maybe.
All right. So that will, item number two will be placed on the regular agenda. Item number three is a request to approve the lease agreement with the Hawks Wolf Soccer Club that does businesses Livonia City Soccer Club for green meat soccer fields. This comes to us from the Department of Parks and Recreation for continued use of green-milled soccer fields, one and two for a five-year period with an option to renew for an additional five-year period. Good evening, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Council President Ted Davis for representing Parks and Recreation. With regards to Council item number two, if it is a diamond mine, Parks and Recreation will gladly take ownership of it. We are requesting council approve a lease agreement with the Hawks and Wolves Soccer Club. They have been leasing these fields for the last 10 years, have maintained them impeccably. It's been a good partnership between a private organization and the city, and it does save us a significant amount in yearly maintenance costs. This is for a five-year initial agreement with a five-year option to renew. I'd be happy to answer any questions council might have on this.
Madam President.
Vice President Barr.
Ted, thanks for that explanation. So the, the money, you said it saves us a lot of maintenance costs. Is the benefit for the city in that maintenance savings, or is there additional revenue on top of that that they're paying us?
There is no additional revenue payment to this. This is simply the savings in the yearly maintenance cost.
And that's consistent with what we've done prior to now, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, this is, I think, a great partnership. Certainly, I think the city benefits from the partnership with, with Livonia Soccer Club. I trust they benefit from the partnership with the city. Glad to see this going forward. I'd offer approving for consent if there's no objection.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilmember Jolly.
No, no objection. But, Mr. Davis, I'm just curious, in terms of structure here, how, how do you play into this in part, per the representative from Parks and Rec? So you do have a hold on some portion of green meat, correct? Just trying to understand, by and large, you do not control green meat, but you control these soccer fields, is that correct?
I think "control" is a, a strong word there.
You are the steward of a portion of green meat.
Yes, I would agree that I am a steward of a portion of green meat. The, how that has come about, that is a fantastic question, and I have no logical answer to that. But somehow, the historical site is under, is, you know, under the auspices of another city department while the soccer fields are with Parks and Recreation.
Because if we could give you a hard time about the whole of green meat, they would give us a lot more opportunity to see you and to bother you.
Well, I should look forward to that if that ever changes. Thank you, Councilman Jolly.
Nothing more.
Did we have, but thank you. All right. That'll be on the consent agenda. Item number four.
Thank you.
Item number four is a request for increase in golf cart fees. This too comes to us from the Department of Parks and Recreation for single cart riders at all golf courses effective immediately for the 2020 golf season. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Council President. Again, we are asking for a surcharge for single riders. What we've had, what we've seen during this pandemic, obviously, it started off with no carts, then it went to single riders allowed on carts. We have been, for quite some time, I believe since June 8th, allowed to operate with two riders in a golf cart from different family units. We're still seeing an increase in overall the demand for single riders on carts. Obviously, this impacts course revenue. This impacts TJW's revenue, who is directly responsible and leases the golf carts. And, and we're willing to accommodate that to a certain extent, but we do feel a single rider surcharge is appropriate at this time and would just be in effect for the 2020 golf season. If we are still in a similar situation in '21, we would come back and ask for something similar then, but I'm gonna hope we are not. So I'd be happy to answer any questions council might have on this.
Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you, Madam President. This is, goes to the, creating the playbook that nobody really had with COVID. And I think that the three and $5 is more than fair. I have no problem with it, and I would offer an approving for consent.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilmember Jolly.
Again, I'm speaking a lot initially here, but I promise I will not carry this through the meeting. You know, this is also an opportunity to really point out how nice the golf carts we have are. I had the opportunity this last weekend to plan on a different golf course that was still using gas-powered carts that had seen better days probably 10 years ago. So if this is what it takes in this particular instance to keep our, our courses serviced with top-notch, electric, battery-powered.
New.
Golf carts. This is well worth it, and I think the average golfer would agree. So, support. Thank you.
All right. That'll be placed on consent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Item number five is a vacating request. This comes to us from the Engineering Division to partially vacate public utility easement with property located at 19700 and 19750 Hagerty Road in the southwest quarter of Section 6. It's parcel ID 46-023-99-0005-003 and 46-023-99-005-004. Mr. Zalinski.
Good evening, Madam President. This is a bit of a housekeeping. Obviously, it's in relationship to the Hagerty Square development on Hagerty Road. As you look at parcel A, they're looking to vacate 23 foot of the Phillips Road easement. And that's where the businesses are out their outlots. Parcel B is actually where the apartments are being constructed. They're looking to, to vacate 43 feet of that particular easement. Looking to refer to the Planning Commission for their consideration, public hearing, and hopefully come back to city council. We don't see an issue with this. Go through the formality, housekeeping issues of getting it vacated. The applicant provided to the city clerk back on June 15th, and hopefully run its course to get back to us here shortly for approval on that development, which is going very fast. Thank you.
Madam Chair? Yes. I will offer approving and consent to send this to the Planning Commission. All right. Any conversation objections? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item number six. This is a request to waive the formal bid process and approve additional expenditure. This too comes from the Engineering Division for the Schoolcraft Service Drive Storm Sewer Insulation for an amount now to exceed $20,000 and to approve the revised contract amount of $141,905 from budgeted funds. And this pertains to Council Resolutions 342-19, Council Resolution 264-17, and Council Resolution 233-12. Mr. Zalinski.
Good, Madam President. Again, this is relationship to closing out the contract with the D'Angelo brothers. It was approved back in September 2019. We had three locations in the city that we were addressing some stormwater concerns, and, and we had them complete a portion on the service drive in order for us to complete the maintenance of some concrete pavement that was put in by L. Anthony. So with your request, we'll be happy to complete that portion, extend the contract amount to 141,905, and close out the contract for their services provided. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zalinski. Council? Mr. McCullough.
Madam, thank you, Madam President. Through the chair to Mr. Zalinski, just a quick thing. So I noticed after doing this, this bid has been extended a few times. Do you expect, obviously, the work needs to be, I'm in support of it. Do you foresee going out for competitive bid probably following next year?
Yes, the original council resolutions were, because it was extended for D'Angelo for the emergency contract. And then if there's any future stormwater work or whatever, it would be out for competitive bids itself. But typically, these are problems that the assistant city engineer was working on. And we approved it last September, but we had a little bit of residual money left. And this was a critical item to complete the road. But in the future, yes, for future stormwater, that'll be taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you. And yeah, I mean, obviously, this is crazy times, and especially trying to get these projects wrapped up. So I, I would offer an approving for consent if nobody has an issue.
Seeing none, we'll place it on the consent agenda. But you'll still have to come back, Mr. Zalinski.
I'll see you August 5th. I look forward to it.
I know. You, you have to be here.
As long as Ted Davis is here, it's all I care. Oh, he left.
Left. Wise man.
Yes.
Item number eight is a request to approve First Amendment to lease agreement for the city-owned building at 33251 Five Mile Road. This comes to us from the Department of Law regarding agreement between the city of Livonia and Manoush Velu, and I think I mispronounced that, the proprietor of Sam's Place Family Restaurant for the period ending August 31st, 2020, with one successive option to renew for an additional one year. And this pertains to Council Resolution 264-05. We have new data on this item, and I would like everyone to make sure that they've seen a memo that was, or a letter sent to city council from the law department regarding some new information about the lease.
Madam President?
I think we skipped number seven. Sorry.
Sorry.
You kind of skipped one.
I did skip one. I hope no one would notice. This is clearly a very sharp group of people. Item number seven is a request to waive the formal bid process and authorization for expenditure. Sorry, Mr. Zalinski, I always hate to overlook you. This too comes to us from the Engineering Division. This is to provide asphalt subdivision repairs based on contract 20-A unit prices with Nagel paving. This is with respect to contract 20L, an amount now to exceed $100,000 from budgeted funds. And this was Council Resolution 101-20. Mr. Zalinski.
Thank you, Madam President. In order to coordinate with the DPW, we found some areas that could be beneficial to having Nagel complete. There's money set aside for repairs in asphalt subdivisions to help reduce the maintenance involvement with DPW. We're looking at Parkdale Court, down off of Stark Road, south of Plymouth Road, other areas where we have some large transverse joints that we want to get fixed, and any areas where we can overlay or reduce any significant maintenance before winter sets in. We're asking Nagel paving, an amount of $100,000 to provide that, and helping assisting the engineering and DPW to do this type of work. Looking for your approval and the amount of $100,000 from budgeted funds. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them. Thank you very much.
Council?
Madam President?
Yes.
I'll offer that for consent. This is a, a standard, well, I shouldn't say standard, but this is something that we've become accustomed to, to take advantage of paying for the taxpayer dollar and the, I think, I think maybe I'm saying this wrong, but maybe the closeness and the proximity of Nagel doing business in the city of Livonia allowing us these opportunities. So for consent, and again, I commend Todd and his people for doing this. It makes sense. Thank you.
All right. Consent? No objections? All right. But you still have to come back, Mr. Zalinski. Item number eight, let's try this again. This is a request to approve a First Amendment to lease agreement for the city-owned building at 33251 Five Mile Road. This comes to us from the Department of Law between the city and Manoush Velu, and I apologize again for getting the name, mispronouncing the name, proprietor of Sam's Place Family Restaurant for the period ending August 31st, 2020, with one successive option to renew for an additional one year. And this is relative to Council Resolution 264-05. Mr. Neville.
Thank you, Madam President. We, we've had the opportunity to review the, the proposed lease and with the amendment. This current lease expires August 31st of 2020. The renewals for a period of three years, two years will be locked in. After two years, then we have the option to, to not renew or not to exercise that option. We believe that the rental of $5,663.92 per month for year number one is, is fair and reasonable under current market conditions. The second year will be increased in accordance with the Consumer Price Index, whatever that amount happens to be. So it'd be the base rent plus the CPI. And then the, another important term is the fact that due to the situation involving COVID and the governor's executive order, where restaurants are only allowed to provide seating for up to 25% of the, of the capacity, the rental, while that 25% number is in play, so the, the tenant will play, pay 25% of that monthly rent. And then if it goes up to 50% capacity, then he will pay 50% of that, $5,663.92. And then once the capacity goes over above 50% to full occupancy, then the regular rent of $5,663.92 will kick in for year one plus the adjustment for year number two. And depending on how three, things are going in year number three, then we have the right to exercise that option for another year. And as I said, under the circumstances which the tenant is facing and with the COVID situation, we believe that this amendment to the lease is fair and reasonable. And we would ask that the council approve the resolution to enter into this amendment to the lease with the tenant.
I know Councilmember Jolly has a question. I have a question. Aren't, aren't we currently at 50% indoor occupancy per the governor's orders?
I thought we were just 25.
50.
The outdoor seating is 25.
Outdoor seating is 25. Indoors 50.
Oh, okay. Well, then, then he'll pay 50%. So the 25% will not be in play, absent any future executive order.
But, but the way this is written, right, it, he will pay 50 based on the fact we're at 50.
That is correct.
Right? Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Jolly.
No, no need. You know, I'll start by saying, you know, I bring up the Consumer Price Index, and I get a whole bunch of grief for it. And then.
I would say on my commercial leases, when I was in private practice, index the CPI was.
That's what I'm saying. But, um, it's great minds, I guess, right? So number one, first off, you know, I like to see that the city is being the type of landlord who is, you know, taking into account the current situation and thinking about the tenants in that particular way. I'm glad to see that that's happening here. I like Sam's. I've eaten many, many meals at Sam's over the years, going back to the old courthouse and then, you know, through recent pre-COVID times. To be honest with you, though, I, I want the, I'm gonna vote to approve this, but I think there's something in here that I need to ask you about. Clearly, we just went through a major, you know, master plan for the city of Livonia that re-envisioned that stretch of Farmington Road. You know, where the, Sam's currently resides, and the senior center, and the old courthouse, and all that kind of stuff. 1.2 talks about the term of the lease, and I don't, you know, forgive me if it's in the packet, I didn't look it up. It says, "The term will commence, you know, extend basically until August 31st, 2022, subject to the landlord's right to terminate prior thereto as set forth in the lease agreement." If we were to get an amazing deal from a developer who wants to partner with us in a very beneficial way to get the master plan done a year from now, do we have the flexibility to do that? Is that what that language means?
No. I think what the intent is, is that going into year two, after, at the conclusion of year two, or 60 days before the expiration of year number two, we have the right to exercise our, we have the right to say, no, we do not elect to exercise the option for year number three, and therefore, we're going to terminate the lease. But.
Okay. So we have not, I mean, for lack of a better way of putting it, we just haven't accounted for this being identified in the master plan?
Not, well, I.
And I, and I, it's not to, you know, I'm not trying to drag this out or anything like that, but basically, if that magic development were to be proposed, we would have to go back and negotiate with Sam's in regards to that.
Well, again, I'll have to plead ignorance on the, on the language in the underlying lease, but if there is language in the underlying lease, because this, this is essentially modifying the term and then also the rental to be paid, if there was language that would allow the, the city to terminate the lease having to do with situations such as with the, the master plan, then I, then all those other terms and conditions of the lease remain full force and effect. So if there's nothing in there about that, then I would say then we would be stuck for at least two years. But if there's language, and again, I, I haven't seen the, the underlying.
And nor have I. I just, I'm curious. I mean, we put a lot of time and effort for that. I, I would hate to kind of find ourselves in a situation that was self-inflicted.
But I would be glad to look into that and provide that if, if, if this is approved, to decide whether it's a consent or the regular meeting, to get you an answer for that, even if, before then.
I, I think regular is a great option here, just so we can understand what we're looking at. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Neville.
You're welcome.
Wise councils, always appreciate it.
Vice President Barr.
Just a comment on that. I appreciate Jim bringing it up. It's a, it's a legitimate question. I had the same question as I was looking at it. My view on it, that's all this is, is just expressing a view, that the likelihood of, of that happening within, before 2022 would be extremely low. It's a good question, but being extremely low. And so I, particularly in anticipating some of the budget challenges that we're gonna have here in the next year or two. So I do, however, by 2022, expect the Tigers to be competitive.
Not the Lions, though.
All right. So that will be on the regular of the August 5th meeting. We'll go on to item number nine. This is a waiver petition. This came to us from the Planning Commission with respect to petition 2020-05-02-04, submitted by Livonia Budget Storage LLC to develop and operate a climate-controlled indoor self-storage facility on property located on the north side of Seven Mile Road between Middle Belt Road and Parkville Avenue. The address is 29150 Seven Mile Road in the southwest quarter of Section 1. And I would just like to call council's attention to a new information that was received today. It was an email sent to, sent to our legislative director at 536 regarding the, regarding the, the development.
Madam President, would you like me to present?
Please, Mr. Terramina.
Thank you. So this is a request to redevelop the former Toys R Us property on Seven Mile Road. This is a zoning map. The property is zone C2, general business. The surrounding parcels to the east, to the west, and to the north, for the most part, are commercially zoned as well. There are three residential properties that border the northeast part of the site. So climate-controlled facilities, self-storage facilities do require waiver use approval. This property was developed originally in 1969 as, as a toy store. The building itself is about 51,000 square feet. For the most part, it exists on one level. However, the, the ceiling, the ceiling height in the structure. However, the ceiling, the ceiling height in the structure is, is tall enough that a second level can be added, and in fact, that's exactly what the developers intend to do. This is aerial photograph showing what it looks like. The addition of that second level, or partially throughout the first floor, would add another 30,000 square feet, bringing the total leasable area to about 81,500 square feet. That's enough to accommodate about 650 storage units that would be of various sizes located on both levels. The access to all the units would be restricted to inside the building. So one of the requirements for these indoor self-storage facilities is that they, at least under this, within the C2 zoning district, is that they cannot contain any exterior roll-up doors for access to those units. All of that would be handled by means of a single entry point, which would be located on the west side of the building. And if you look carefully at this drawing, you'll notice here on the west side of the building, there is a drive-through drop-off bay. That area is intended to allow vehicles to park underneath it. It would be enclosed. It would have regulating, or it would have doors, both on the north and the south sides, allowing for vehicles to enter the, that structure. Clients could then exit their vehicles, load their materials, go right directly into the building where there are two elevators located to access the, the second floor. That drop-off bay on the original plan reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission was further south on the property. So what you're looking at with this plan is a slight modification to the plan that was approved by the Planning Commission. That bay is narrow, more, more narrow, and moved further back on the property, about midway, a little bit beyond midway on the, along the west elevation. An actual improvement to the design in, in many respects, quite frankly. And it also increases the, the amount of landscaping on, on the property. In terms of parking, one of the major changes to the, to the site will be the removal of a substantial portion of the parking lot, parking that's not needed, no longer needed to support the proposed use. Altogether, a combined total of 22 parking spaces would, are shown on the plan. That is, has been determined by the proprietors to be adequate to accommodate the use. This is not something that the city regulates in terms of the amount of parking. We rely heavily on what the market requires, and, and these developers are experienced in this type of product. And so they believe that the 22 spaces will be adequate. The benefit of that clearly is though adding a substantial amount of green space to the site, most of which is on the north side of the property. You'll notice on the plan that there is an area designated for possible future addition to the building. That is something that would have to come back before the Planning Commission and the City Council, before it could be approved. So access to the site would be controlled. There would be gates. They're far enough on the property so as not to restrict access from Seven Mile. There's the ability of cars to enter the site and loop back out safely without the gates interfering. But it would, as you would expect for this type of use, would be controlled through these gates. It would be a decorative fence along the front of the property. The other areas would be fenced using chain-link fencing. And then along the east side of the property, where it borders the residential, there is an existing masonry screen wall. Landscaping altogether constitutes about 55% of the site. I'll go quickly to the, to the elevation drawings. This is another substantial improvement to the property of what it looks like. I think most everyone is familiar with the, the existing appearance of the building. You can see that the front, the side of the building facing Seven Mile will be improved substantially with the addition of brick, as well as other materials. There would be a tower element added in the southwest corner. And you'll notice on this plan that drive-through drop-off bay is located forward, almost on, right up to the front of the building. Envision that now further back on the property. So that feature will be not, will not be as prominent along the front elevation, which I think is, is an improvement. Dumpster is something the Planning Commission reviewed and approved. That would be located on the back portion of the property. Also signage was another matter that was addressed. You can see a single ground sign located on the, the front part of the building. We don't have information on any wall signage, but that's something that would have to be reviewed by the, by the Inspection Department or the Zoning Board of Appeals if, if it exceeds what is permitted by code. With that, Madam Chair, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have. This comes to you with an approving resolution by the Planning Commission.
So, thank you, Mr. Terramina. Vice President Barr?
Yeah, to the Chair to Mark, I noticed in the, in the resolution, the most recent resolution from the Planning Commission, it talks about landscaping being added to the, to that back area, the green space. I think maybe around the detention pond. On the landscaping plan that we have, I see a few trees noted in the detention pond. Unless I'm looking at the wrong view, I don't see anything in the green space area. Can you just clarify? Yeah, that's what I'm looking at, right there. So maybe I'm looking at the right thing. And the reason I highlight this, other than that I think it's a good question, but we, we had some communication that came in last minute here from a neighboring business that, who's in support of the, of the plan, but just expressed a desire for, for more attention to that, so it doesn't just become a blank green lot.
Yes, so Mr. Elkus is here this evening, and he will address council shortly. It's a conversation that I've had with, with him, as well as the petitioner, and that is how that area is treated, at least on a temporary basis, should be something that is, is, is close to being in a permanently maintained condition as possible. The question then becomes is irrigation and how that area is maintained. And, and while maybe it's not reasonable to require underground irrigation over the area that might someday be a future addition, depending on when that occurs, it is reasonable to make sure that it's properly watered and maintained. And so the resolution by the Planning Commission attempts to address that. Terms of the final design of the detention basin, that, that's something that's still conceptual in nature. We'll have to go through that. It's, it's my hope in working with the engineers on the final design and with our engineering department, that we would, we would have a basin that is a natural part of the land form and not something that, that is utili, you know, just utilitarian in nature. So this right now, I think, addresses the issue of how large does it have to be? So they go through just enough engineering at this point in the design process to verify that they have the land area necessary in order to build the basin. But hopefully, we can work with them on the final design, including landscaping, to make it look more natural, as opposed to just a rectilinear type of basin, which is what it appears like now.
You mentioned irrigation. Item number four in the approving resolution from Planning Commission says that underground sprinklers are to be provided for all landscaped and sodded areas. Is it your understanding, we will hear this from the petitioner too, but is it your understanding that that would include the green space? That's the way I read it, but...
It would not include the detention basin, and it would likely not include the area where the addition would go. Other parts would probably be, have to be treated with permanent irrigation. That's correct.
So a couple of brief comments, but those are two questions I have, just some clarity for when you speak, and the intention, what I'm reading here is sodding instead of hydroseeding, which is great, and I'm reading underground sprinklers. So if we can just get some clarity of where that'll go. I'll just make this comment, and then I'll be quiet and let you answer those things and let somebody else speak. In general, I like this project a lot. I had an opportunity to participate in the rapid response meeting when this came through in Mayor Brosnan's office, and there's been a number of changes, it looks like, as far as building materials that I think are positive, and I think it's an attractive building. We're taking a building that right now is, is not attractive as much as, the only thing attractive about it are my memories of Toys R Us. But I, I think this is gonna be a really attractive option on Seven Mile. And my, my other concern with it in that rapid response meeting was, you know, this is another area that was highlighted in the Vision 21 Plan. But, but I actually think that this, you know, we can't, we have that Vision 21 Plan out there, and we want to be cognizant of that, move towards that, but we can't hold up development either. And I actually think this is something that is very compatible with the ultimate vision of that and the type of residential development that we're looking to put in there. I think it actually could create a need for this type of thing nearby, so. In general, I'm supportive, in support of it, so.
Councilmember Jolly?
Thank you, Madam President. I like this project. I like that it does not look like a storage facility. I like that it looks like maybe any kind of corporate structure or office building, or, you know, something that would add value to the neighborhood. I'm also glad to see that the Toys R Us site will not be lingering and suffering a slow death at that particular intersection. I mean...
Thought it was already dead.
Well, the business is dead, but, I mean, in that intersection, we're accustomed to other big retail spaces standing vacant and lingering for decades. Or at least a decade. You know, I, there's a lot that we would normally ask for in something like this, but I think it's, it's largely accounted for, and I think it will add value across the board. So you have my support.
Thank you.
Councilmember McCullough?
Thanks, Madam President. Through the chair to Mr. Terramina, would you, do we have a timeline on this project? An estimated ETA of construction process, I mean, we're looking at a year? Any idea from the petitioner?
I'm gonna let the petitioner address that. I believe this project will, will get underway as soon as, soon as it can, you know, given the lead time necessary for final engineering and, and plan review and our final architectural.
I would say that, yeah, compared, kind of what Councilmember Barr was stating is this might actually accelerate, make it more appealing for that district. So again, for being a storage unit, that is pretty nice to see, especially from what the old Toys R Us used to be, even though I will miss Toys R Us as well.
My turn?
Your turn.
Yeah, man.
Hi, everybody. I'm Brandon Grisco with Fossil Bond on behalf of Livonia Budget Storage here with Jerry Rugerillo and Tony Rugerillo, two of the partners on the project. And to start, Councilman McCullough, with, with your comments. We are itching to get underway with this project as soon as possible. Obviously, this is one of the preconditions to doing that. So while we don't have a hard timeline in place yet, we are, we are looking to move as quickly as reasonable in this situation. And, and Councilman Barr, specific to your comment related to whether there would be sod and irrigation on the north end of the property behind, or in the area rather, where the green space is shown. The intent was to have that hydroseated, not necessarily irrigated or sodded. And, and the reason for that being that it's a pretty large space, would be a pretty significant investment to do that. And the hydroseed itself can actually be an improvement over what the sod could look like potentially, just given that it would take maybe an extra growing season to get there.
Madam President?
Please.
So, so thanks for clarifying that, and, and it makes sense. I get it. And I'll just note that while there might be concern about what happens to that green space, an empty green lot is much preferable to an empty concrete lot, which is what it is currently, so...
Glad you said it, Councilman. Thank you.
So I, I don't have an issue with that. My concern, though, is the resolution that came from Planning Commission. I don't see that area carved out, so I'm glad we all have that understanding, but it seems that the resolution that we ultimately vote on should reflect that, unless I'm missing something.
Councilman, if you will, just give me one second. The carve-out was in there at...
Number three and four, just say all, I mean, you know, I guess...
There was one item, Councilman, sorry to interrupt. There was one item that said the area shown as a future addition would be maintained to the satisfaction of the city. And I believe that was meant to encompass the situation that we're talking about.
Okay.
And that's number four, towards the end of the, towards the end of the item number.
Says all plant, so that number four says underground sprinklers are to be provided for all landscaped and sodded area, well, I guess technically you're right. If you said this part was hydroseated, then that would exclude this part from it, because it says all sodded areas shall be installed to the satisfaction of the city. And plants maintain a healthy condition. But then it says all disturbed lawn areas shall be sodded in lieu of hydroseeding. As this is written now, wouldn't that include that large green space? I just want to make sure we're representing this correctly.
So Councilman, and I hope this isn't argumentative, it's not meant to be, but point three does talk about the area that includes the detention area and the future addition can be hydroseated, but shall be watered and maintained to the satisfaction...
I literally just read right over it, missed it. Okay.
Sure, understand.
Got it. All right, I, I don't think we have a resolution offered. I'll offer approval for consent, if there's no objection.
Did we, I, I believe Mr. Elkus is here tonight. I'd just like to, Mr. Elkus, did you wish to address the, the council?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Lawrence Elkus, 30833 Northwestern Highway, Suite 204, Farmington Hills, Michigan. I'm agent for Todd Realty, the owner of the property where Piranis is, which is north of the subject property. I put together what I thought was a concise email that showed where we were and what the concerns are, and we endorsed the project. We think it will be a nice addition. We are concerned that the green space is green. And so long as engineering and planning, here are this, here's, here are these words in their heads as they're going through it, that's all we're looking for. Thank you. Any questions?
No. Thank you for sharing your, thank you for the email, and then we got it late, so thank you for taking the time to...
Thank you.
...to come tonight. Vice President Barr?
I, I understand your concern. Your email was great, and, and share your concern, actually. I also recognize the practical consideration of the owner as to what it would take to irrigate an area that large that's not really being used for anything, and possibly is gonna be built over. So I hear ya, and, and I'm gonna trust that they're gonna, that, to the satisfaction of the city, that they'll maintain it. I, I'm not ready to ask for them to sod that and, and to irrigate it.
I'm not looking for sod. I'm not looking for underground sprinkling. I just want it to look green on a commercial basis. And as the people from Piranis, customer staff, look over there, they say, I'm not looking for putting green?
Yeah.
I am looking for green.
Well, maybe that's a revenue opportunity, yeah, I understand. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Just one moment. Councilmember McCullough, just if I could comment. I think this gets back to some of the discussions that we've had about things that are required in the, in the site plan and when, when the Planning Commission approves, and then the need to go back and make sure that, that the, that the project stays in compliance. And I think that's what you're asking for, right?
Long-term.
Thank you. Councilmember McCullough?
Thanks, Madam President. Just one, something quick, because I, I frequent Piranis a lot as a...
I cannot help you with your game.
It's fine, but knowing what that, what it looks like now, I can tell you at least going through the construction process, you know, usually these detention basins, they, the newer ones anyways, the way they filter the water, they don't go stagnant. And especially with that green space, it might take a couple of seasons, but you're gonna start seeing some grass go through them. The, the seeding profiles that they use now, you know, they'll usually take, usually in a fall season. So I, I will be more than happy to walk into Piranis and look over at a very, not a, quite a putting green, but close.
If it's close, be great. I also want to thank your amazing Planning Commission, Planning Director, Mark. He's been wonderful to work with, and applaud you for keeping him happy, apparently.
He's okay.
I'm smiling.
In all seriousness, as you've recognized, Mr. Terramina does an outstanding job, and he wears a lot of hats, and he, he does it well. And I, I think there, I don't like to speak for the entire council, but I will in this case. We feel extremely fortunate to have him, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any audience communication? Seeing none, we're adjourned.